The following program is made possible by First State Bank. Offering secure online and mobile banking. First State Bank is ready to serve your financial needs with locations in Warren, Hermitage, and Hampton. First State Bank. The difference is leadership. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
Alderman Marshall here. Alderman Humphrey.
Here.
Alderman Mosley here. Alderman Henderson here. Alderman Fraser here.
Alderman Bur.
Here.
Okay. You all received the copy of the minutes. For December 14th to approve the last email and this is. Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the December meeting. All those in favor, show of hands. Either opposed, opposed, pass of hands.
Oh, madam.
Yes.
I'm not legal at this time.
Okay. So you know this meeting?
No.
Okay. Alright, well we've got a form, so we'll just not recognize your form. Okay. That would be five to one, Ms. Clark. Okay, now the city clerks report.
Okay, the general fund revenue for year-to-date was three million, forty-five thousand, six hundred fifty dollars and forty-four cents. Expenses on two million, eight hundred twenty-one thousand, nine hundred seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Revenue and administration, one thousand, four hundred twenty-two dollars and sixty cents. Expenses, three hundred seventy-three thousand, two hundred forty-one dollars and fifty-four cents. Revenue and law enforcement, one hundred three thousand, one hundred fifty-three dollars and forty-nine cents. Expenses, one million, eighteen thousand, two hundred sixty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. File revenue, thirty thousand, nine hundred five dollars and ninety cents. Expenses, two hundred thirty-two thousand, five hundred seventy-three eighty-four. Revenue tax revenue, seven hundred ten thousand, one hundred ninety dollars and forty-four cents. Expenses, seven hundred fourteen thousand, two hundred seventy-six thousand, forty-nine cents. Building cost revenue, sixteen thousand, four hundred forty-nine dollars and forty cents. Expenses, twenty-one thousand, three hundred forty-three dollars and forty-two cents. District court revenue, seventy-eight thousand, one hundred eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. Expenses, eighty-nine thousand, three eighty-one thirteen. Municipal building expenses, thirty-nine thousand, five hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety cents. Recreation revenue, nine thousand, seven hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty cents. Expenses, one hundred forty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars and sixty-seven cents. Local center revenue, thirteen thousand, three dollars and eighteen cents. Expenses, twenty-five thousand, eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Armor and labor center revenue, four thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars. Expenses, twelve thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars and forty cents. Children's revenue, twenty-two thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty cents. Expenses, fifty thousand, eight eighty-nine eighty-four. City citizens expenses, two thousand, eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. Revenue in other departments, forty-eight hundred dollars. Expenses, thirty-five thousand, eight hundred two dollars and twenty cents. Roadport revenue, six thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars and twenty-seven cents. Expenses, nineteen thousand, four hundred thirty-five dollars and fifteen cents. Economic development revenue, fifty thousand. Expenses, forty thousand, four hundred thirteen dollars and forty-five cents. And you probably got two copies of Street Department's financial statement. The one that's attached to you, the one that's separate is going to be on your unit looker. If you have two. Okay, Street Department revenue, two thousand, fifty thousand, seven thirty-six twenty-four. Expenses, four hundred seventy-nine thousand, six hundred eighty-two dollars and ninety cents.
Okay, that's second. Okay, we approve the financial statements. And I have a second. Did you second? Okay. We've got a motion and second to approve the financial report.
Two seconds.
Ms. Alderman.
Okay.
Any discussion? If not, all those that can vote, please raise your hand. Okay, that's five. Four. Okay, let's move to the next.
You should have a proper cash register. See the sales and use specs. You see, for December, eighty-one thousand, two hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. For year-to-date total, two hundred twenty-nine thousand, four hundred seventy-four dollars and thirty-nine cents. And you're up by three percent from last year. County sales, you see, six hundred, big five thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars and twenty-four cents. For year-to-date total, six hundred thirty-two thousand, four seventy-nine forty cents. And you're up three percent also in county sales.
Okay, so you're saying that we're up three percent as it relates to city sales as well as the county, correct?
Yes. And this time you actually go for the year-to-date December. And you should have a cut there. You can tell the district court first, your court. And you're going to have a fourth quarter overtime.
Okay, thank you. Alright, my report is short and sweet. We do have a chamber lease agreement that's in your pocket. If you remember, the city was written up last year because of the lack of a contract with the chamber. And then this year, the council did not approve the contract between with the chamber. So we've got to come up with some type of an agreement. And this is what Mr. Fike, attorney, came up with. If you all get read it.
I think it's a city place. And I like the way that the city attorney pulled it together. So I know that we approved the lease agreement with the city of Warren as the lease are and the leasing as the driver county chamber of commerce. I did have one question on it, and that is a motion. So I guess we need to go a second before I ask my question.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to accept the lease between the city of Warren and the driver county chamber of commerce. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. In the third paragraph, it says, therefore, the city of Warren, in consideration of the agreement by the Warren and Bradley County Chamber of Commerce. I did not realize we had a Warren and Bradley County. I thought it was just the Bradley County Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. Fike is here, I believe. So do we need to strike?
No, I was just curious. We do have a Warren and Bradley County Chamber, or is it just the Bradley County Chamber? That was just my question. I didn't ever heard of a Warren Chamber of Commerce.
I just put that in there because the original agreement with the chamber was with the city. It did become later the Bradley County.
Oh, at that time, it was the Warren Chamber.
So I put it in both ways.
Okay, alright. I did not realize that at one point, it was the Warren Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Call for the vote. Alright, all those in favor, by a show of hands. Okay, we've got five. Thank you. And then I'm going to introduce, we have a visitor tonight, Ms. Mary Jones. If you'll just kind of raise your hand. Charlotte's going to be out for knee surgery. So we've got someone that will be filling in for Charlotte in the coming. I guess her surgery is the end of the month and possibly be out eight weeks. So we've got her in learning how to do that job. Okay, it's time for public comments. Do any aldermen have anyone to recognize? We have two sign-ins, I'm sorry, three, that have signed in to speak. One that called and the other two that signed in. Ms. Angela Wheeler. Okay.
I wanted to address about the, on behalf of the drivers for sanitation, a raise. I mean, I have worked for sanitation for sixteen years. I'm at twelve sixty-five. So me and Patrick Smith have license to run the transportation, which took three years to receive that license. And we're just not being recognized for it, you know? If something breaks down, we're the ones that are running back and forth to Eldorado. Hour over there, hour back, not to mention the time there. If the truck goes down, it's me that drives the jump truck. My guy's still in the back of the jump truck. You know, it's just a lot involved. So we've been locked up, you know, the drivers were locked away. In recognition for what we do, you know, for our positions. Which I realize the throwers just got their state mandated raise.
How long you been with this? Sixteen years?
Well, I'm thirteen, and then I was at this county for three years. And those three years I was at the county, they weren't able to hire anybody because nobody wants to work for this class. So I've come back to help out.
We appreciate everything y'all do.
Without me and Patrick, you know, the transportation would be shut down. That would, you know, shut the city down. Because when I say it takes three years to obtain the license that we went for. And we go every year just to keep up our license. And just to make twelve sixty-five an hour. I mean, I do junk, I do leaves, not to mention trash. It's a lot too. In sixteen years, you know, it takes a toll on your body.
Is there some kind of step? Do we have a, like, you know, we looked at that earlier. Is there a step for those positions? Step increase, like, other than just our two percent, like, yearly raise or?
This step.
You know, we got that.
There are, you can move up in steps. And then when they get certifications, they are moved up too.
I mean, we're at the highest positions. I mean, you can't go nowhere else.
Okay.
I mean, we have CDLs as drivers, and then me and him have the extra licenses to run the transportation.
But there are step increases for all positions.
We've never received anything.
You may not have received it, but all positions do have a step increase.
Yeah.
I don't have that paper in front of me.
It's in our, one of our packages.
Would you all like to take into consideration and look at that?
Most definitely.
With the papers? Okay.
And we certainly appreciate everything that you're doing, as well as your peers.
Yeah, which I realize I'm back at the bottom now because I've, you know, I've been back about four years now from county. But I, you know, I still have the cumulative sixteen years, you know, of service. Between thirteen or fourteen with the city, and then three years of county. You know, one is the lowest paid. Yeah, one is the lowest paid people around. So.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, and thank y'all for hearing me.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Alderman Henderson, would that go back to the ways and means?
Yes, and I didn't want to make a motion. I thought Alderman's, I want to keep calling you first, but I want to make a motion to refer back to, to refer to the ways and means.
Do I need to do that? So I have the motion, we agreed, take that back to the ways and means, the raises for sanitation.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, we've got a motion and second to refer back to the ways and means, step increase in sanitation. All those in favor, by a show of hands. Alright, that's five, four. Okay, the next one on the list is a Zach Killum, or Killiam?
I'm with the newspaper.
Oh, okay, so you're not here to speak.
No.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, Liz DeArmond is here.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, please. Is he the new PM or? Are you, you're representing the Eagles, sir?
Yes, I'm the new editor.
You're a new editor, okay. Well, that's my. Okay.
Several months ago, I wasn't able to be at a meeting, and I sent a letter addressing large animal and city limits situation. My mother's, I realize that all that, there's nothing I can do at all by my mother's, they're right there. And he's as legal as could possibly be. But maybe I can prevent this from happening to someone else's property. I mean, I just want to walk out, I'm an animal lover also, but you don't want to walk out and smell horse manure. And when you walk out the back door, and that's pretty much how the situation is. I'd just seriously like y'all to, or to look at it seriously and maybe change this. I don't think it's fair to the animals, nor is it fair to whoever lives close. This situation, of course, kind of bothered home. You know, where I live, I don't like hearing those donkeys bay. At first, it was funny, but, you know, after four, five years, it's really not anymore. But anyway, if I wanted to hear them bay, I'd live out in the country. And I think that's where large animals should be.
Okay, you said that you submitted a letter?
Yes, ma'am, but it's been several months.
Okay, okay.
Yes, I missed the meeting, and then I got the wrong time.
It's like October, what was it?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
And also, and I've dug into this just a little bit, and as far as like property law, can there not be some, as far as like a person's property and it's staked off, can there not be some type of limitation or like regulation to where you cannot put a, you know, if your property stakes here, you can't put your fence right here, or whatever you'd like to put right there. I'd like to see that, but then too often, I really didn't find out if any of the other counties were different than what we were in that area. But you can put it right there on the property law.
Refresh my remembers. Where exactly again?
Okay, so refresh your memory on the situation. My mom has a home, she's in assisted living at this point. But anyway, over Hook Street, area seven Hook Street. You can drive by there and look at it. Anyway, there's a little section, not even really big enough to be called a lot. But anyway, it was purchased, and fenced in, and horses were put there. My mother's carpool runs this way. I mean, this fence is just, I mean, right by her, right there, right at her back door. Which, you know, lowered the property value. I wouldn't lay paywalls to buy a house with horses, three horses right there. And it was a house she built just for herself twenty-five, thirty years ago, but it is still a nice home. Still is a nice home, but the horses, like I say, you walk out her back door, you smell manure. Twice they gotten out, my renter's been woken up to. Well, I don't know about the first, the second time, the police had to come out and get him in. I don't know whether way drinking like that. I understand the fence wasn't secure, and that's taken care of now. But anyway, things like that happen with large animals.
And that's all I have today. Just really, please y'all would seriously consider it, Mr.?
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, we will move into.
I'm the chair. Yes, ma'am. I mean, have you told me where we are since the last time we mentioned the fence? To my knowledge, I mean, the ordinance is in place. So if we didn't want large animals in the city, we'll have to change the ordinance. I mean. So there was nothing as it relates to ordinance that we did?
Like, at that time.
But did we respond to her to let her know that? Or we listened to her public comment?
No, she and I've had a telephone conversation back then. And, you know, I explained to her, and she understood the ordinance, and she had a copy of it and everything. That doesn't mean we can't go back and look at the ordinance if you all want to do that. It would actually fall under the sanitation. Billy, please. Okay, Mr. Burks. When you get sworn in, if you have a sanitation committee meeting, and we'll look at that. Okay? Any other comment?
No, I just think we need to, you know, respond to bring some culture to it. Either we're going to review the ordinance, or what did we tell her prior to, or not when she came the last time.
I know last time, the ordinance, I think somebody read the ordinance, or maybe we said we have, and that was, I mean, it was just that's the ordinance.
I think we were emailed, we actually was email the ordinance, but we still need to, you know, respond and bring culture to situations when they come to us.
Alright, now then we'll move on to our administrative and standing committee report. And first one, that's the chief, please.
How's everyone doing, chief?
Fine, you?
Good guys, I'm talking about monthly reports. Pay per ten, just looking at things on the pie, or taking up on that report, calculating numbers. And, oh boy, we are showing where we are. Right now, we still are, we all, showing that the fourth staff, we know about three, during the month of December, that was condition to leave. But fortunately, we got, just today, we did more interviews. We have no problem, I've said it right now, filling these slots. It's open, we're certified officers, as a matter of fact. Five out of seven individuals that I interviewed today started to reply to the police department. Since the new changes and paying things of nature have been to effect. Out of the seven that I interviewed today, five of those seven were certified officers. One was, yes, ma'am, one was a college graduate, and the other was a certified jailer from another city. So our applicant pool, as a matter of fact, we had to stretch it out just a little bit longer than we wanted to. Just give everybody a crash, give people time to get their applicants in. people time to get their applicants in, applications in, so we are expecting a couple more certified officers to come in, so that would really be the boost and a kick in our, um, in our important status, as of right now, we get the, with a pretty person at the prom, we get the fifty-two's a little bit.
You're not getting leftovers.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. If they're leftovers, they're leftovers. On Thanksgiving leftovers. We need three, yes, right now, we need three, yes, ma'am. And like I said, we have about five that we interviewed today, uh, I don't know, um, seven, sorry, five are certified. We have another, folks are turning certified application in. And hopefully, um, by next week we'll get civil service together and, um, in these conditions field. Um, but I said, the good thing about it is we are getting certified applicants and, um, you know, another positive part about it, as we interview them, we're, uh, kind of, that just kind of getting a feel of the, um, of the, of the new customs that we have as far as pay and things that nature send us. And, um, we get a lot of good feedback, but you know, that, yeah, we, we give something in the pay that we have now, but we have also better, that certified, that we're becoming and make more home, or one hour within a good community, um, where people live in and, and, and afford officers to come, so, you know, we, it's, 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 we're looking at force right now. I think this will be, um, the time that we'll look back and see the, whether we'll change how police force and then, and copy individuals and, um, the quality of individuals that we have working for us and then we look back at this particular time and say, um, we can see a slight change because we are getting, like I said, a lot of good applicants. Can't make them commit to stay, but we can get them in and we won't let you get them now. Make sure that that's why we can get them. Um, so, I haven't seen our overtime report. Um, I imagine after the month of December, probably did, did kind of skyrocket a little bit because I truly that hired new people that couldn't get in the vehicle by themselves, have to be trained, be certified and also lost some certified officers, so we have a lot of our people that, our, um, our core people have worked to, to extend hours more to, to fill them until we get these, 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 um, fields. But again, like I said, we do anticipate and give these fields very quickly, so. Other than that, the rest is in the numbers, so. We did hire, okay, you know, before we did hire two officers after last month, last time we met, one was certified, one was uncertified. Um, the, um, certified officer, uh, Miss Reagan Corbin, she has started, she's been training at the right now, and Mr. Burton, we're probably going to have to get him into the March before we can get him into the academy, uh, for next academy class. So, as of right now on staff, we have two individuals that have to go to the academy and that's a good number, if you miss that too, we certify we'll be, we'll be okay.
Your actual overtime was, was not out of line, it was, it was, uh, normal.
Normal, okay. Well, maybe it'll be next month, I may, I spoke to, so. But don't you understand why, like I said, we got to get these people in and get them to the point where they can work on their own and get the car by themselves and, uh, don't have to meet on the street at one time trying to train, so, that's all right now.
And then, um, under the police committee report, also, Frank, there were two requests to, uh, the chief might want to explain them.
Well, yes, ma'am. A little request was at the, uh, time of the, uh, when we got the pay increase for our certified and our certified officers, there was, uh, that was, uh, I'm sorry, our certified and patrol sergeants, that we, we left out two, uh, pay scales that we did not increase. Um, there's a slot for corporals, we have three corporal slots with the, that corporal slot, the slot between sergeant and, um, uh, patrolman, that's another supervisor position. We did put a pay scale in for that, what we did was the, um, to, to, to balance it out, so if it is the middle scale, it's kind of went in the middle, sergeant's getting paid seven twenty-seven, certified's getting paid seven oh two, seventeen oh two, we're in the middle spot for that, we got seven, seventeen fifteen an hour for corporals, and then doing it for the uncertified, so we just moved the, um, uncertified up to the, um, what we're paying the, um, certified before we, um, raise.
So you got seventeen fifteen for the corporal, what was the other one?
You got approved seventeen oh two for certified and then seventeen twenty-seven for sergeant and for uncertified, uh, I didn't put that down in my, thank you very much. For uncertified, it's going to be, um, fifteen oh two, for uncertified patrol.
So I need to make a motion that we approve the sergeant patrolman at, no, the uncertified at fifteen oh two and then the seventeen fifteen for corporals. Okay?
Okay, that's a motion? Um, need a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion in second to increase the uncertified and the corporal positions that were left out last month. Any discussion? All those in favor, by a show of hands? Okay? Five, okay? Is that all for the chief?
Okay.
Thank you, Tony. Then we'll move to the fire chief, Mike Ashra.
Evening.
Good evening.
Please y'all have a copy of my report, uh, in the year of the pain, thirty calls for this group last month in September, that brought us to three hundred and fifty-nine into the record for the year and for the department, seventy-eight more than last year at this time. Uh, we had two structural fires during this month, one was Max Stevens' home on South Martin, they just remodeled their kitchen and have to remodel it again. Uh, then we had a garage fire on, uh, South Main Street and then twenty-seven other calls, including an extrication where we had to, uh, extricate a seat driver over and things. Uh, not starting out the year very well, already had, uh, three structural fires starting out first of the year. One you've already probably seen when you drive into town on North Merle up here, luckily we got all people out of that house, that was a triplex, three different families living in that house and they were all able to escape, thank goodness. They first came in as a, just a small fire ceiling fan on fire in one of the apartments, but when the driver got there, he realized that the whole back side of the house was on fire and it was always coming out the roof. And so it was a matter of, uh, just trying to save as much as we could and definitely save the properties surrounding there. Okay, um, just want to say the fire department, those members that, uh, wanted their shots, received their shots, uh, today, so we started our first round and I have my little card here and the second round in about thirty days. We're happy about that. Uh, the civil service will meet, uh, tomorrow night to fill the one full-time position that's, uh, open. Uh, I have one fully certified applicant, which, uh, he wants to settle down here in the city now and, uh, he has, uh, a lady that he's planning on marrying here, so he's ready to settle down, so, uh, do have one, but they also have another applicant, so that'll be up to the civil service meeting tomorrow night at, wait, five thirty, five thirty five, I can't remember, I've seen two different times, but I'll be here, but, I believe that's it.
Okay, um, Alden Tocprin, uh, under link there, the final dues, you want to?
I make a motion to say firefighters do.
Second. Motion in second to pay firefighters dues, all those in favor, by a show of hands, okay? Okay, there's nothing else, thank you, sir.
Thank you, yes.
Now, uh, Mike May is not here tonight, he's not feeling well, so I told him it would probably be better if he just stayed home and rested, so if you have any questions on his sanitation report, we can, I'm sure get you answers, but, uh, and he did give me an update on the, uh, Davenport Street cleanup, it started today. Uh, the contractor was able to get started today on that. And then there are two on the condemnation list, if you all want to do that tonight or wait till we pack for more information from him. The letters have been sent when the time is appropriate to do it, it's, it's whatever.
I love that we move forward with the condemnation, just there on Fort 12 West Pine and eighteen thirty-four West Pine.
Okay, have a motion, do I need a second? I need a second?
Second.
Okay, for, uh, condemnation, uh, Fort 12 West Pine and eighteen thirty-four West Pine, any discussion? All those in favor, by a show of hands, that's fine, okay?
You know what, what's happening on Havoc Street?
Well, uh, we're still trying to find another contractor that will go in there and clean off the lot that has been, um, condemned. We did remove something that they had recently brought in, uh, that was removed last week, I believe, uh, but Mike is still trying to find another contractor to go in and do it. It, you know, we just don't have a lot of contractors that do that type work, so we have to, uh, we have to wait until they can get us on their schedule and y'all know how long we've been waiting for Davenport, uh, after they were, uh, on the list, so it, I mean it.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know what else to do. I mean, we're, you know, but he did, I mean, Mike is reaching out and trying to get some, some quotes again and, uh, timelines and things like that. Mary, want to give an update on, on Quoquette? Um, Mr. Hapley called me last week, I believe it was, and he has sold a property and as of right now, that's all, all I know. So, once that sale goes through, then, uh, you know, the residents will have to vacate. Anything else that I might, an answer or get you an answer from Mr. Mike? Okay, uh, building and code, you've got that report too? Uh, well, that's what we discovered, okay? Street foreman, Mr. Ricky Davis?
We started out the year with the snow, snow didn't cause a thing of problems today, so we've had, uh, I tested positive for COVID and Christmas, for a day at, two days at Christmas, so I'm all clear now, in my life.
Trust me, he set out his time.
He said I was good to go.
And he got his letter, he sent it to us. We hadn't seen before.
We've just been trying to keep up with all the work requests and stuff like that, I know there's some we hadn't done, so I've got some, so, I'm waiting on a contractor to do one of them, and that's about all, I'm actually all right.
Alden Mosley, do you have anything else?
Not too much.
Okay. All right, then, thank you, sir. Community. Community and economic development committee, Alderman Marshall?
No, we don't have any.
Okay. Uh, moving down to ways and means committee, Alderman Henderson?
Uh, we do have listed under the ways and means on your new agenda, the resolution to, um, adopt the, uh, budget, we're not using the word, uh, this year for the first time in history, we're using a resolution, so I'll refer that to you, come here.
Okay, uh, resolution number eight, six, five, eight, a resolution adopting a budget for the city of Warren, Arkansas for the calendar year twenty twenty-one and for other purposes. Whereas the mayor has submitted to the city council for approval or disapproval, a proposed budget for the city of Warren, Arkansas for the calendar year twenty twenty-one, and whereas the following budget has been approved by a majority of the members of the city council at a meeting call for this purpose, and whereas said budget is now on file in the office of the city clerk, it shall be available for public inspection during regular business hours. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of Warren, Arkansas, section one, that the following budget for the operations of the city of Warren, Arkansas for the calendar year twenty twenty-one be and the same is hereby approved and funds in said amounts are hereby appropriated for said purposes and accounts during the year twenty twenty-one from time to time as needed. A detailed budget document shall be available in the office of the city clerk for public inspection during regular business hours. The non-restricted expenditures, administration is three hundred and eighty thousand, three forty. Law enforcement is one million, one, uh, five oh two, one eighty-six ninety-four. Fire department, three hundred and nineteen thousand, seventy-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. Sanitation is seven hundred and forty-two thousand, eight seventy-eight. Building codes, twenty thousand, six hundred. District court, a hundred thousand, four seventy-five. Municipal building, thirty thousand, nine hundred. Recreation, one fifty-two thousand, two twenty-six. Cultural center, thirty-three thousand, four hundred seventy-one and fifty cents. The Armory Neighborhood Center, fifteen thousand, three hundred and fifty. Senior Citizen Center, three thousand, nine seventy-one. Shooting range, forty-eight thousand, nine hundred sixty. Airport, nineteen thousand, seven hundred. Other is twenty-six thousand, five hundred. Economic development, seventy-seven thousand. The total general budget is three million, four seventy-three, six thirty-one oh one. Restricted expenditures, district department, five hundred and thirty thousand, two ninety-three. Total restricted, five thirty, two ninety-three. Other accounts, breathalyzer, two thousand, eight hundred, zero for child passenger fund, court automated fund, eight thousand, district court cost fund, fifteen thousand, sales tax, economic development fund, two thousand. Two hundred thousand, I'm sorry. Uh, fireman's pension and relief fund, seven thousand, five hundred. Law enforcement fund, four thousand, nine hundred. Law fee fund, twenty-three thousand, six hundred. Municipal judge retirement fund, zero. Sales and use tax fund, one million, seven hundred and five thousand. State funds, one million, six hundred and fifty thousand. Total other accounts, three million, six hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. Total budget is seven million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, two, seven hundred and twenty-four and one cent.
Seven hundred and twenty-four, one seven, four, oh, one.
Seven thousand, seven million, six hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and one cent. Uh, so we need a motion in second?
I know that we adopted resolution number eight, six, five, eight, and that it also includes the attachment that has the, uh, twenty company one capital expenditures, the law enforcement, three capital expenditures, as well as the breakdown of the budget that includes the annual bonus to be paid in July, Christmas bonus to be paid in November of twenty twenty-one, the two percent increase, except for the city council members, the minimum wage increase to the eleven dollars for seventeen employees and the fifty critical and essential employees to receive a one-time pandemic of three hundred and fifty dollars each, which is a total of seventeen thousand, five hundred. Uh, fire hazard duty increase of the one hundred and twenty dollars monthly, after two years, one fifty, after three years, one eighty, after four years, two ten, after five years. Fireman increased salaries, uh, at thirteen seventy-five an hour and fourteen oh three after the certification and the total budget increase for the fire was forty-one thousand, seven one four. Police officers increased, the sergeants of the seventeen, twenty-seven an hour and the dispatchers, twelve dollars an hour. Total budget increase for the police department, one hundred seventy-five thousand, five eighty-six fifty-seven and seventy-five thousand dollars for consultant fee as it relates, uh, submitting the R of Q.
So we've got a, a motion and I still have a second? Second. A motion in second, is there any discussion? All those in favor of, uh, resolution number eight, six, five, eight, please raise your hand? Okay, that's five four, okay?
What the resolution is about this?
Yes, ma'am. Um.
That is all that's listed, um, under the ways and means.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and moving on to reports in business of board and commissions, Mr. Wadman is not here either because he was not feeling well and I suggested to him as well that he stay home, um.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, no meeting on planning commission, no meeting on aggravation, you have the water and sewer commission meeting, um, report, no meeting housing authority and the special division commission has not yet, and, um, is there any unfinished business? Any public statements, kind, uh, we already covered those, new business? Announcement, uh, Monday, the eighteenth, will be the Martin Luther King holiday and then the virtual winter conference for AM bill starts, uh, Wednesday, if you have signed up. I need a motion to pay the bills for December.
I know about the bills for the month of December, but.
A motion in second to pay December bills, although, uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Show of hands. The next meeting is set for February, um, agenda meeting, the fourth at seven, and, uh, second Monday is the eighth at five thirty. Okay, second? Let's say, all those in favor? Thank you.